I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act in Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, laws of the state of New Jersey. The planning board secretaries prepare a schedule of meetings at the planning board at Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2020 and has posted a true copy of the schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall. Has mailed true copies of the schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and maintains a copy of the schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. And everyone please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call?
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Lundouty?
Here.
Mr. Colallo?
Here.
Mr. Scudary?
Here.
Mr. Zach Parcheck?
Here.
Mr. McManon?
Here.
Mr. Schelke?
Here.
Okay, we are informed to proceed. Our first item is approval of the January 9th, 2020 minutes. Does anyone have any questions or corrections to the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Grimaldi. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Colallo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Communications? No communications, okay. Old business. Do we have anything under old business? All right, moving on to new business. Under new business, we do have an application tonight. It's application number two, entitled Certificate of Nonconformity Carmella Arali, Aral, 409 North 15th Street, Block 4, Lot 26. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yeah, we're good on notice application.
You want to step forward?
What I'm going to do is swear in our two consultants, Kevin O'Brien, Chris Quaido. Gentlemen, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth itself?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, you're up.
You can turn around. Sorry. My name is Mike Bonner. I'm from the Baltimore Jabberbaum Work Ave. There's a whole bunch of other names. Here's a card. It's called my name, V-O-N-N-E-R. We're here tonight for an application. We've submitted a very detailed application. I'm sure every one of you has read all thirty-four pages of the case. It presents a very detailed case of the history of my client's family owning this house. But it's really very simple. In order to grant the request of release, which is a certificate validating the nonconforming use of this property, there's really only two questions that need to be answered. One, was her father's home, which is now hers, located at 409 North 15th Street, ever illegal to family? In other words, did it ever meet the requirements of the zoning district in which it was located? Either in 1984 when it was constructed, or under the only zoning ordinance we've been able to come up with, you know, from our Oprah request and things like that, which was the one in effect in 2007, which is when Mrs. Arali inherited the house. We can't prove what the zoning was in 1984 because despite repeated attempts, we made it's detailed in here, I'll go through all of it. We made eight attempts contacting the township planner, the clerk, the township attorney, having contacted the library to see if they had archives of the ordinance in effect in 1984. No one could produce it. So we're left with trying to determine what was the case at that time. My client, when I asked her to testify in a few minutes, well, testifies that the house was built as a two-family, was constructed as a two-family. Her father moved in up in what we call either the front unit or the upper unit, and her Aunt Louise and her family moved into the rear or lower unit, the one located behind the garage. We do know that in 1984, it's in one of the documents in the Exhibit I, I believe Exhibit I, I'm sorry, that's not strictly, I'll have the Exhibit number three admitted, that a certificate of occupancy was issued in 1984 for a new house. Again, my client testified that new house was constructed as a two-family. So, in order for a certificate of occupancy to be issued, one or two conditions had to be in place. Either a used variance was granted, and as part of our Oprah request, we requested any applications or zoning matters that occurred for this property under our knowledge, which I'm interpreting to me, and your attorney can talk about this as well, that was probably a simple building permit, and it was a permitted use. So it was either a used variance or permitted use because a certificate of occupancy was issued. That's fairly strong circumstantial evidence that this was permitted use in 1984. There's additional documentation here, things, a land data sheet that was related to a 1987 revaluation of property within the town. That clearly identifies, if you read it, that there were two units in existence in 1987, and that the property was being taxed as a two-family house. Now again, we can't prove that that was the case in 1984. That's pretty good circumstantial evidence that three years before, this house existed in exactly the same capacity. And we confirmed, and there's an email in the package again, from the township tax assessor, that this house has always been taxed as a two-family. So if your answer to that question is yes, either 1984 or 2007, this property was illegal to family. Then the next question you have to answer is, is the applicant entitled to a certificate of nonconforming use pursuant to your present ordinance? Application gives indications for the sections of the ordinance that your attorney testified of their validity, but essentially it's Section 120.29.6, which allows for continuation of nonconforming uses. The answer to both of these questions is yes. The applicant is entitled to a certificate of nonconforming use. We do understand that the burden of proof, and your attorney can tell us where it's in New Jersey, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove this. Typically, that's done by having a copy of the ordinance that was in effect at the time the house was built. We can't do that, despite all the efforts we made to do that. But we can go back as far as 1987, using Kenilworth Borough issued documents. And there are additional documents that were issued in 2007, when the client inherited the house, when the applicant inherited the house. And both your code compliance officer and your fire subcode official wrote on the application that it was a two-family house. And again, we confirm that the tax assessor, that it was being taxed as a two-family at that time, and she's been paying those taxes, so she can testify to that as well. So, having stated the basics of our case, I would point out to you that there's a concept in New, a legal concept in New Jersey called judicial notice. It has been applied to zoning boards, boards of justice, and other subsections of the government of towns. And all it means is that you can, you can consider things that are common knowledge, and you can also rely on official governmental, government-issued documents. So what we're saying to you, what I'm saying to you by reading the concept is, all of those documents that we've attached to our application are official BARTO documents, and you can use them as part of your decision in making your decision whether this is a valid nonconforming use. I can go into more detail on some of this stuff, or I can present our factual testimony, and then we can, yeah.
Our attorney will answer this question.
When, I'm assuming at some point since 1984, the zone changed so that two families are no longer permitted in the zone?
Under the current ordinance, two families are not permitted. Under the ordinance in effect in 2007, I believe the word is duplex attached to our units, semi-detached owners, which, if you read the definition, it simply requires vertical walls to separate the two units. And again, there are pictures in there showing numerous vertical walls between the two units.
So now it's a single family zone?
It is.
Since approximately?
Honestly, I don't know. I would say that in 2015 was the most recent.
Mr. O'Brien?
It was May 2015.
Okay.
It's currently, I believe, the R5, though, which is the R5. I believe, I believe, Mr. O'Brien, I believe, as a record, across the street, two families aren't permitted. If you look at the, well, the only zoning map that I was ever able to get my hands on in 2014?
No, on 14th Street, they're allowed block over.
I think that the dividing line is the center of 15th Street. If you look at the 2012 map, it looks like it goes through the center of the street. If it doesn't, my applicant can testify that the house next door to her on the same side of the street is also a two-family, right next door, and that predates her house because that house was there when she moved in, and it's always been a two-family as well. But that's not on the other side of the street.
Kevin, you want to?
Yeah, I don't have the, the par six is on between Seventeenth and Twentieth on the north side of Washington Park.
I may be, I may be thinking about it older versions. I was thinking of the 2012 version. I thought that was the current version of the zoning map. So it's a block over?
No, it's on 14th Street. Let's say it this way, the dividing line is not down the middle of 14th Street?
Yeah, correct. I've just been looking at, thinking of the older map.
South of Sheridan, there's R6, R5A, excuse me, both north and south to the east of 14th, looks at about 13th Street.
Kevin, did you want to give a rundown?
Would you like to hear the applicant's testimony first, or? I'm happy to.
That's her, Mr. O'Brien.
Do you want to hold off for?
Yeah.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Could you, for the record, state your name and spell your last name, please?
Carmella Arali, A-R-A-L-E.
Thank you.
I was going to let her, essentially explain, explain my narrative. I think it would be quicker and easier, but I have a list of things that I want to make sure she says.
So I inherited the home in 2007 when my father passed away. He purchased the home in 1984. He and my grandmother lived upstairs. And in a separate dwelling unit, my aunt and her husband and child lived downstairs. It's always been the, it's a two-family house.
Where there's two kitchens?
Yeah, there's two kitchens, there's plenty of bathrooms, yeah.
How long did your aunt stay there?
So she lived there from 1984 until 2009, when she passed away.
So she lived there when your father lived and when you owned it?
Yeah.
She rented the entire time?
Yeah. The same room, actually, the entire time.
And the house next door to you, you can testify factually that it's a two-family and was in existence?
It is, and it's always been there. I used to go to visit my father and stay there very frequently as a, you know, older teenager, and it's always been a two-family next door, right next door.
I really don't have another question. Since 1984 to now, to the present, to the best of your knowledge, has the property consistently and continuously been in two-family use?
Yes, except for when I was cited by Mr. Herbert last year.
I was going to ask how we got here. I mean, what?
So how we got here is this, I had tenants upstairs that were not cleanly. And so I had brought in a dumpster, and I?
When they moved out?
After they moved out, yeah. I got rid of window treatments, I redid the fascades on cabinets, and I got rid of doors, painted, and that kind of stuff.
This was when, what year?
It was at the end of 2018, I believe in December, I brought in the dumpster, and I was cited somewhere in January. Well, no, I actually started getting calls from them in January. I had to apply for a dumpster permit. I did all that once I knew that I needed, I didn't know I needed that. So yeah, it's always been in two-family.
Okay, so other than that period where you were cleaning up the place?
Right.
It's never been abandoned? You always intended to have that?
Yeah, and actually, I've always had the Mr. Giordano, who was the fire guy. He's always come out and inspected either upstairs or downstairs when I've had tenants move in and out.
And how many tenants have you had upstairs and downstairs?
Okay, so Aunt Louise lived there until 2009, and then I had a series of three people downstairs, and currently I have the fourth tenant downstairs. Upstairs, I had three families over the course from 2007, when my father passed, well, 2008, because I had to, you know, inherit the home and do some stuff with probate. And then, so it's from 2008 until March of 2019, was it? 19?
So you said in 2018 is when you started cleaning it up?
Yeah, the end of December.
So they were, that they were gone?
The one, one family was gone, and then I moved my daughter in, but then I moved her out when I had the problems with Mr. Herbert.
And what were you cited for by the zoning officer?
Because he said that it was not a two-family home, and that it wasn't legal.
He stopped by one, the way it was explained to me, he stopped by one day and asked to see the inside.
Right.
And he came inside and said, hey, well, he told.
Yeah, so he came inside and inspected, and he said, you know, I don't, I don't know why you're doing this as a, you know, why you're using this as a two-family, this is not zoned as a two-family. And I said, well, I've been paying two-family taxes since I inherited the home in 2007, and I've always treated it as a two-family, so I don't know why you're saying it's not. And he said, oh, because I have an ordinance, I have a, you know, whatever.
At our office, was in touch with him and had several discussions. And Tenova, she was signed, she's been misreported a couple times. We've managed to put that off until this issue is resolved, and I expect the misreported matter to be discussed if the certificate of nonconformity is issued. That was moved, it's on again next week.
So that's your?
So the, just to be clear, the downstairs apartment is currently being utilized, the upstairs apartment, since Mr. Herbert told him that this was a problem, and after she finished all the renovations, she had made a wish not to rent it until this was resolved.
Okay, but her intent is to rent as soon as it's cleared up in some way?
Yeah. It's been a fair amount of money, renovated, not renovated, redecorating, and it's ready to go.
You know, are you basically done with your?
I get a realtor's commission.
All right, so then I'm going to first start with our professionals to see if there's any common questions.
I think Mr. Bonner covered the introduction, while I've got a reminder that a certificate of nonconformity can be granted by this board by showing the facts. And the facts have got to be that this was a legal two-family prior to a change in the ordinance or prior to an ordinance being written that would make this a nonconforming use. So the burden of proof is on them to say that this was legal at the time it was built, or at the time, at some point in time, that allowed it to be in existence.
I agree with that. I had mentioned this to say that we understand that the burden of proof is on us. All our efforts to obtain a copy of the 1984 ordinance have gotten nothing. And as I said, the oldest record that we can find is from 1987, indicating that there were two units, and that was a review of the structure for the purpose of revaluation, and very clearly on there states that there are two units in there as of 1987, at that time. So, and a CO was issued, again, you know, like the governmental action in 1984, to the testimonial, or actual testimonies of the applicant, where her father closed on the house, and it was a two-family residence, because her family lived upstairs, and my aunt and my aunt lived in the back, back downstairs. I don't know how much more, without a copy of that ordinance, that we could produce at this time. And again, if that's not enough, in 2007, it wasn't permitted use. And the ordinance changed since, because that, I think he said in 2015, and it's now not, because 2007 it was when she took that.
Anything else, Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Quaido?
Chairman, the R3 zone that existed did cover this area, and that did allow semi-detached two-family homes. And I'm taking a look at the 2011 master plan in the back of that particular plan of maps that's labeled Existing Land Use Map, August of 2010. And Mr. Quaido and I are looking at it, and that shows this property, the property of the store, to be two-family properties. Meaning that when we went by to our master plan effort, looked at the building, it appeared to be a two-family. We didn't go in, but it was based on appearances from outside, so that could be two doorways, two mailboxes, two meters, one of those things that may have made it indicative of being a two-family.
The home in question, the home next door?
The home in question and the home next door to the door.
And I can confirm what Mr. O'Brien said. I was actually the one who did the drawing for this master plan. So if I listed it as a two-family, it would?
Yeah, I mean, one of the homes is a duplex, so it's very clear that that's a two-family house. Because that's not in question, and it's been there since, right, since 1900.
I just have, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I, my parents and I grew up, I grew up on that block. And when they were building the two homes, right across from my parents' house, and this home after, we were told I had no two families, and they were sure that there was going to be mother-daughter houses, not two families, what you call multi-generational now. We were pretty much assured of that. Now, do I have any records? I was, you know, with my father here, we came up to town, he just wanted to make sure that that wasn't happening. Who said, well, I'm just telling you, with the store from where I remember coming up here, my father was, my father was very concerned about two families going up on the block. And that's what we were told. So, does it mean anything now? I don't know. But I'm just telling you from a historical perspective, from growing up on the block, that's what we were concerned about.
And he was probably concerned because right behind him is a whole road.
Correct. And we, and we also came uptown with those, and we were told now that they could be two families. We just wanted to ensure that on the T-shirt right across from us, they were, so. Just, sorry.
Yeah, you have every right to speak.
Couple of questions. How many meters are on the house?
One.
One. Okay.
There's separate entrances?
That's fine. The lower apartment is on the first floor, and I guess is approximately 400 square feet?
About 400, 450.
Okay, your Exhibit H, I think it is? Shows that the? Yeah, H. Oh, no, that is the residential property record card. On that exhibit that you've provided to this board, you have one kitchen?
No, there's two kitchens.
I'm not saying what you submitted to this board. You submitted to this board documents that there's one kitchen in this facility. There are pictures inside. So there's, there's one door to the, there's one door on the exterior of this?
There's one door on the front, and then there's a side door and a back door.
Okay, then. On Exhibit G, the upper-left picture, what is that picture showing us? Upper-left picture, page one of two, Exhibit G of yours in the middle. Interior photos of 409 15th Street.
Upper-left?
Upper-left.
That is if you?
So there's, yeah, so this door right here is on the side of the home.
Yes.
It can either go to this one of the hall, which is in front of the hall, or it's a back door in the back of the hall.
Yep, okay, and that is, that is a door to the 400 square feet, that's behind the garage.
There's also a door behind this door on the exterior of the home.
That goes outside?
That goes outside, enters into the apartment.
That's fine. What's on this side?
This picture.
Okay, that just?
This is, yeah, this is the, there's a door on this side that goes into the apartment upstairs.
That just, from that door, that where your thumb is?
Yeah, you can go either to the left or the right.
And to the left, you go through?
It'll be a little apartment.
You go through a locked door into the apartment. To the right, you walk into the other apartment.
There's a, no, there's a locked door.
It's a locked door.
The, it has to be open so that we can take the picture. There is, you see?
Oh, okay.
You know, here, there's a doorway, there's another door.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify, it's this. Yep, and that's just the stairs up and down.
The doors on the right here are the share.
Yes, when you get to there, it's switched back.
And so that side door, in essence, brings you into the laundry room, which is the shared?
So you're stating that it's a two-family because there was two different relatives living in this residence, and there's two ways to get in and out of the property. Okay, there's one meter, and that would signify, and I'm surprised when you were walking through, that you didn't say that. I mean, it's one meter, it's one set of utilities, it's a same family. As far as getting taxed as a two-family, I have a mother-in-law that's in my house, and I know when the tax assessor came through, he said, yeah, that is one of the things your taxes are going to be rated at that level because there is another family in here, and you're getting taxed at that two-family rate. Now, these may be just offhanded statements of how, how come your taxes get increased, but, you know, there is another family in my house, we are mother-daughter, she's in there, but, so I'm saying, from the evidence that you're showing us, that you presented to us through the building assessment, it sounds like it's a mother-daughter.
With the exception that there are our two kitchens, and the document that you pointed to from the 1973 revaluation, which also had? I'm not sure what the second page was, but we'll go to this. Third column on the right, it does indicate that there's an apartment in the basement. Okay, and then if you go to Exhibit, Exhibit that shows, that includes Exhibit B, the Oprah request and response, a land data form.
Which exhibit is this?
Exhibit B? B, the Oprah request and response. It's documented here, up the right hand, per corner here, says land data. This is the present record that took place of the document that you were looking at. And if you look up top, it says two units. On the second, it's on the next page, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, one at a time. Is Mr. Grimaldi here?
One second, I'm going to find which page has it.
Next page, page that looks like it is.
Next page that looks like it is.
And where does it say second? Two units?
Two.
Oh, up in the upper corner.
Two.
Okay. Two units, four bedrooms.
Two stories.
Townhouse, no.
It is.
Real house, townhouse, no. And again, I would say that the two units is not exactly impressing me because, again, I was told I had two units also.
And it's a mother-daughter. And just to play devil's advocate with your point about the meters, my son lives in a four-story apartment building in Philadelphia with about 70 apartments in the building. And they don't have separate meters. They prorate out monthly units based on the size of the unit.
Is that, is that what's done?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Yeah, and that's also...
It's not uncommon.
You get the bill, the example, the example of a 70-unit tenement in Philadelphia versus a building that was built in Kenilworth in, when was it built?
1984.
Eighty-four is a hugely different comparison.
And I would say back in 1984, which is more than likely, that there would also be one meter placed on that. And prorate between...
That's a...
There are two kitchens in the house as well.
Have you had tenants in here?
I have.
That have not been, that are not, have you ever had tenants not related?
Yeah.
So, well, okay.
I want to add to that question. Prior to you inheriting the home, was there ever a non-family member renting it?
Well, prior to me not renting, prior to me inheriting the home, my aunt still lived after my father died.
But, I mean, that's my question, is that basically, was there ever anyone who was a non-family member who occupied the home prior to you inheriting?
No.
Any other questions from?
I just had a question.
Oh, Mr. Stewart.
Did you make any attempt to get the original building permits or plans or anything from the...
We did. They were all requested.
Okay.
Between the upper and the...
I know we were saying the...
And I had a lengthy conversation with the barclerk. She spent a half hour on the phone with me, trying to track stuff down. We talked about all the options for whatever might have been in place.
So I have two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stewart.
Talk to me about life safety features of the home specifically in each unit, please.
Safety?
Life safety. You know, if there's a fire, how do people get out? Is it sprinkler? Do the tenants have evacuation routes? I mean, I didn't go inside the house. I'd like you to walk me through.
Okay.
If the house catches on fire, how do people get out of the front doors?
Well, I have the fire inspector come every single time. And he is, he is...
No, I'm sure you did a great job. I just, for my own knowledge, I'd like you to tell me.
I have, I have the, you know, alarms, both upstairs and downstairs. They're separate. There's plenty of ways to get in and out.
Egress. Egress?
Egress has, has a direct door outside into the backyard.
Right.
In addition to the entrance that we were talking about, the side entrance. So there are entrances on both sides of that unit.
Upstairs has the front door, and then the side door, and also through the garage.
Okay. And then the only question I had, you mentioned your exhibit H that I was reading here. And on the second page, it looks like this. Can you just tell me in the upper left-hand corner, where it says type and use, what boxes should I check? And this was the 1987, right? The redo or the reassessment, I guess? But 1973, I apologize, reevaluation.
Which page?
That's okay.
The same one, Robert's right.
This one here. It's H. It's your second page.
Yeah.
Of H.
That was, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's second pages. I see that it says a one tenant dwelling. So if you look in the third column, it says a basement apartment.
No, I get it, which could, could go to Mr. O'Brien's point that it was a mother-daughter or not.
That page doesn't have a date on it. It was attached to the document on the front of it that said 1973 reevaluation. But I've been pointing to is that a more definitive document establishes it was in existence in 1987. It was far back than it did now. And the building permits, all of which we attempted to get. I can look through the list of the attempts that we made.
Oh, I saw that. I appreciate that. I did.
That's kind of our position is if we don't establish that it was a two-family unit in 1984, I think the ordinance in effect in 19, in 2007, when she inherited the house, permitted two fam, duplex, semi-detached dwellers.
Mr. O'Brien, would you agree with that statement that in 2007, the two-family house would have been allowed there?
2007.
Huh?
2007.
2007, when the applicant inherited the home.
We're looking at a 2004 zoning map. And that shows that this block is in the R2, which was single-family. The R3 is across the street on the...
14th.
On 14th, on the west side of the street.
Clarify the year for me. I'm sorry, what year was that?
This is updated the 10th of May, 2004.
Thank you.
But what we're, we didn't, no one produced that map process. I'm not sure what it says. What we're relying on is the fact that in 2007, the compliance official, the fire subcode official, both issued documents indicating we were in R3, and that it was a two-family. So those documents were issued in connection to sale of two families. They're attached to exhibit. Thank you, exhibit A. This says, this is your application. It would be this.
It is.
You know, we're in here, this is... Exhibit E, on the two certificate issued by the barclerk in 2007. Both of them state, sell to family, and both of them state R3 zone. That's what we can rely on because we haven't seen any other documents from 2007. And the page for, the page describing what's permitted in, what's permitted in the R3 zone, includes semi-detached, two-family dwelling, or one duplex, two-family dwelling. The definition of a two-family. States that they merely need to be separated by vertical walls, which is the reason for the two pages. Yeah, I'm sorry that this is not seen. This is just in my collection of maps. This is 2004. And that's, that's a snapshot in time. I'm not familiar with exactly what we're doing with that.
So let me just ask you a question to all of this. So apparently, the applicant and Mr. Bonner had information that I guess isn't correct for the sake of things. The application says it's in R5. The background plus some other stuff says it's in R3. You're saying it's in R2. So is it, I'm just talking, just really, I'm talking to our professional. So is it still non-conforming in R2?
It's not conforming in R2. Correct.
There's one piece of documentation here. There's a lot of confusion, but this one, application for certificate of compliance dated October 24, 2007, zone R3. Kevin, if Mr. O'Brien, 2007 zone R3, would a two-family house be allowed?
Yes, yes.
R3, yes. But we're not in R3.
We're not in R3, no.
I get it.
No, I get it. I get it. This one, I'm just saying. But so that may have been...
The barclerk was saying.
An error at the time. So in R3, it was permitted.
But in R2, where it is?
Right, it's not permitted.
And there's no, wait, have you verified that this is correct?
That's where I am.
Mine is replaced with a different person. It's not signed by anybody. Do you want me to clarify this? Guys, we will have to be talking on the record. So, if someone has a question, including the applicant.
This is my fee.
The one that I leave my pocket is whole. I go in.
This is 15th here. This is going to be interesting. This is my fee. This is my fee. This is my house, second one is your house. But on this map, this is showing R2 plus 3. So this block is on 15th over 14th.
East side.
That west side is a... We're looking at the map, Chairman, now, discussing with the applicant exactly where the house is located. And on the 2004 map, her property is across the street from the R3 zone.
Now, Kevin, that map, which they didn't have the luxury to see, but that map versus the cart map that's online versus the other map, they all have it not in R3.
That's correct.
It is directly across from it. And as our board member stated, you stated, those other houses are all two-family. And if somebody was walking through doing any close-out analysis, may have said, "Oh, yeah, actually, they're all two-family." They may have made a judgment without referencing that to a map.
We can't say.
We can't, no.
All right. So does any other board member?
I have a question. All these new maps that I've never seen, do we have a map in Or do we know what the zoning was in 1984? The master plan. This is a 1996. Did they show this here? Asked for it. I wasn't part of it. I'm sorry. This shows, this is in R2. But across the street is R3. This is proposed zoning districts from the master plan from 1996, prepared by Dr. Disco in November 1992. So that is, this is, so we still don't know what, we don't know what was in it.
How many mailboxes are there on the house right now?
Two.
Is there a picture of that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a picture of that in here?
There's another map. It's 96 master plan, again, prepared by Dr. Disco, revised in August of 1994, November of 1992. That shows this block as being R2. And the block across the street on the west side of 15th is R3.
Correct.
And this does say exist... I don't know why they... I don't either. We asked for all of it. Do you have the zoning words? Ask for that as well? The latest one I have is of 70. We rewrote the master plan in 2011. It was based on the last one. Unfortunately, I have one. One way or another, a certificate of occupancy was issued in 1984. If it remains non-conform in use or happens to use variance, granted, we also asked for zoning records and planning records from the property. They weren't produced either. There is no record of what was applied for, of what the certificate of occupancy was granted for, other than the fact that we have an applicant who justified that there was a two-family house there. Not separate meter, but with two kitchens and two families living there. And the certificate of occupancy was granted for that residence on the pan. Recognition by the town from at least 1987, that it was a two-family house, that it's been taxed and such. There's a lot of strong circumstantial evidence that this was recognized as a two-family. Somehow it was validated as a certificate of occupancy was granted.
Right. I mean, at this point, that's somewhat repetitive. So do we have?
I have one more question over here. Did your father have the house built, or did he buy a house that was in the process of being built, already planned, or was it built already?
I don't think he had it built. Paparato's built it.
Because there's a few other houses that I guess were all built the same timeframe on that street.
Yeah.
And it would stand to reason that if he built one as a two-family, obviously, it's worth more money. He would build one even as a two-family.
I don't think he had it built. I think he just purchased it.
Any other, Mr. O'Brien, if you need to go?
How many hot water heaters and heating systems are in this house?
So it's all one. It has one hot water heater. They divvy up the utilities. So there's one hot water.
What's the square footage upstairs versus downstairs?
I don't really know. Maybe like 17?
Downstairs is about 400 or 500.
So most of the square footage is upstairs?
The house is 30 by 47. The garage is about 25 feet. So the rear would be about 30 by 25.
Three bedrooms, two baths upstairs, one bedroom downstairs.
So the upstairs would utilize more the heating and hot water cost, correct?
So it's down in the first half.
Okay. Any other questions again for board members?
Do you not happen to know the residence at, I believe it's 417 North 15th Street?
I don't know any of the residents in Kenilworth.
And from just checking on the map, it appears that that is a single-family residence, but it's the same house as yours.
I don't know.
And that's just looking at it at Google.
No other questions from board members? Okay.
Now, this is a...
Well, we should hear from the public.
We do have to hear from the public. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's had their final say.
The zoning boards issue certificates non-conforming. So in this sense, we're acting as a zoning board. No one has to step down unlike, because we're not granting variances. It's strictly, is it...
So it's a nine-member?
It's a nine-member vote. And I'm sure Kevin or I can like summarize where we are when we reach that point. But it's basically this, this, you know, these pieces fit, yes. If they don't, no. And if a certificate's granted, fine. If it's not, the applicant is always free to come back in for a use variance at that point in time.
Okay, so that's, yeah, it's similar to the other zoning issues that we've had, not... Sorry. Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
Chairman, since I have, Christian and I have maps that the applicant did not see, didn't know they're in master plans as such, I don't know, to make it fair to the applicant, do you want these documents and reconsider on the back of the door? Yes, I would. And I was going to ask that when everybody was done. I think it might help to kind of pick the temperature where the board is.
Oh, do we want to get, you know, the temperature of the board?
You're just, the ordinance in terms of submitting this application to the planning board, I think that matters to, you know, it's either the compliance officer or the planning board.
We are, we are, we are the planning board, but certificates of non-conformity are issued wherein our Board of Adjustment...
We are, we are the planning board, but certificates of non-conformity are issued wearing our Board of Adjustment hats. So, but we're still overall the planning board.
We should probably continue with the questions.
Yeah, again, one last time, if there's anybody on the board to have any more questions, if not, I'm going to entertain a motion to open it to the public.
Make a motion to open it to the public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. If there's anyone in the public who has something to say on this particular matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Can the applicants have a seat, please, from the block of the public?
Anthony Canaro, 425 North 15th Street.
What's your last name, sir?
Canaro. C-A-N-E-I-R. Our house is identical to 409. The only difference is the handling of the home. It was constructed also in 1984. It is a mother-daughter, single-family home. Paparrotta Construction did build it. Exactly. They built plenty of those houses throughout town. All of them are single families. Two of them recently on 11th Street, which is the Maldy Street, which I supervised the construction of those homes. The permit was pulled as a single-family home. It's clear. It is in an R2, which is also clear. Adjacent in R3 or 14th Street, both Peter Pomodesso, God rest his soul, and Paparrotta's had two-family homes on that 14th Street as well. So I'm not quite sure, I mean, where her interpretation is, but I don't think it's, it's just a matter of... It is a mother-daughter. It's the two-family taxing thing, I agree, Mr. Grimaldi. It's just, it's a question that could come possibly, that's a question for you guys.
Excuse me. My name is Gladys. I own the house.
Excuse me, can you... Gladys?
Gladys Camello, I'm his mom.
Okay.
Yes.
Gladys was friends with my dad.
Very close to his job. Those houses, they were built, three houses. Joe was the one to buy the first house. We bought the second one, and the Polish family bought the third one. They stayed two years ago. I want to declare my house a two-family. I have to come to the town. Then when they accessed the house, and the guy from the town sent it around a letter for the state, stating that the house was a mother-daughter house. Those houses are mother-daughter houses, not a two-family house.
Mother-daughter, single-family. More importantly, if you pull the permit, and you pull the plan, it should be somewhere unread in the town. It should show the permit was pulled and the plan was drawn up as a single-family residence. Again, they have one sewer line, one meter. It's pretty concrete.
Some of you guys are beating my house. I can point you, but I don't want to. So you own the house very well.
Another thing is, you know, to divide it into a two-family home, I would assume there would have to be a firewall. I don't, I didn't see the documents that you guys saw, but is that dividing wall between the upstairs and downstairs, is that a firewall?
It would have to be both vertical and horizontal, you know, the floor to ceiling and the separation between now. It may on the first floor, because it's dividing between a garage and that apartment. So even in a single-family, that would have to be a fire-rated wall because of the garage, not because of the IKT. But to the second floor, they would have carried it because they would have carried the structure from the garage to the second floor. So it all has to do with the type of obstruction, not the use of it, except for the fact of that garage. Which is probably similar to what you've just done in the two houses on the 11th Street.
In effect, in 1984.
Most likely, most likely, yes. I mean, again, assuming, but that that's a basic passive fire restraint that, you know, it's been around for a while. Which these houses are not clustered by.
No, they're not.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. and Mrs. Canaro? Does the applicant have a question for you?
Excuse... You know, I should, I thought they were going to ask questions, but could you both raise your right hand, please? Because what you, what you stated really was testimony, which is fine, but I wanted to make sure that you're sworn in. If you could raise your right hand. With regard to this application, are the comments and testimony that you gave, and that you may give, the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, Mr. O'Connor.
You're, the house that you're both living in the same house. Is it configured exactly the same as far as you know?
I have not been in 409.
The house has been the same since I was in the house very time. I was very close to my father. My father and his sister were living there, and they took my kids.
Do you have two kitchens in your house? Kitchen downstairs, kitchen upstairs?
Built a southern kitchen.
It wasn't built that way.
It was not.
You added that.
We added that.
I never changed anything in that home. It's always been there, the two kitchens.
Well, she's still under oath, but why don't we keep some flow here?
That's it.
Thank you, both. Anyone else from the public? State your name and address for the record.
Ursula Maslenko, 411 413 North 15th Street. The only official duplex of two on that street. And it does have a vertical wall that goes from floor to ceiling, and it's two side-by-sides, so.
And you are, ma'am?
My sister.
My name is Christina Maslenko, and I'm a tenant at 411 North 15th Street. I live, I live next door to the house.
Why don't you both raise your right hand, because I anticipate some testimony here. With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Why don't you state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Ursula U-R-S-C-U-L-A. Maslenko M-A-S-L-E-N-K-O.
Thank you. And you're?
Christina K-R-Y-S-T-Y-N-A. Lesley Maslenko M-A-S-L-E-N-K-O.
Thank you.
Now, we've been there thirty-six years. I guess, I bought in eighty-three, we didn't move until eighty-four. But Joe was already there. He had just bought the house, it was just finished. The Burries moved over on the other side, and Gladys moved over to 425. So they're all three the same houses. They're all mother-daughters. They were built that way by Frank Paparrotta. He used my Europe to build it, so I know.
And you live on the same street as...
I live right next door. Well, I live on Boulevard, but I own the house. She lives there.
Okay.
She's been there since eighty-four. And the thing that sets me about her trying to make it a two-family is really not a two-family. And it's not safe. And she doesn't take pride in who she rents to. It's kind of like a renter mill. And I don't like that many people coming and going. They park all over, and they block the streets. It's too, it's too small, the street. So I don't think it should be made a two-family. It's supposed to be a single-family residence. You want to add something?
Yes, what you're discussing before, there always has been, only one meter for the utilities, the gas, electric, and water. Thing that I lived in next door, I was friendly with a lot of the tenants that were there. Unfortunately, I wasn't too happy with a lot of them, because they caused a lot of problems with parking. They complained to me about some of the conditions in the house. The one gentleman, he was a family that lived there for several years, and was a mother, father, and five children now in that house. Now, the way that house is designed, the way it was designed, when you walk out the front door, you open the door, it's a small platform. There were stairs that went up to the upstairs part, and then there's stairs that go down in the hallway, the apartment. Seven people in that upstairs apartment, and he used to complain to me that the door that she had installed there was locked, and he didn't have access to open it.
He had to go outside to get to the door.
It's like that forbid, I mean, there was a fire upstairs. They had five small children. The bedrooms are in the back, but that fire was in the front, and they didn't have access to that front door. They would have thrown out the window and jumped out themselves. There was no way out of that apartment if there's a fire or something in that front door. Because once you go up the stairs, you're in the apartment. If you could, the only way to get out is to come down, go out the front door. And if you have a key, and you can open that little door that goes downstairs, you're lucky. But other than that, if a fire happens, then it's a fire trap. So that's another reason why I really don't, you know, I said I'm right next door, and God forbid I don't want to see a fire there, but if there was a family living there, and it's a two-family, and there's one that's separated and the other one, somebody is not getting out from the upstairs.
And I didn't know those ordinances changed so many times, but my house and the house at the bottom of the street, right by Blackbrook Park, were supposed to be only two grandfathered in, because they were built in 1908. So I don't, I was told, and I don't know if it's true, I'm kind of hoping it's not, that if it ever burned down to the ground, I'd have to build only one family. That's what I was told. I don't know if that's true.
Yes, that's true.
Unfortunately. I'm here to vote now.
Anything else?
My only other thing, too, is like I said, there's numerous tenants there. Again, I don't have a problem with people. Politically, I've asked the people sometimes, you know, I'm just supposed to introduce them, really, to let them know. There's a very tiny spot there between my driveway and the 409 house, okay? It's fairly big enough for a motorcycle park there. A lot of these tenants, you know, they just pull in, they're back into their cars, sticking in my driveway, some will come, you know, park, you know, visitors, whatever, in the other side of my driveway, and it's like I have four feet to get out, and I don't, I have a five-foot car. I can't get out. I used to have to go to the next door and say, "Could you please move your car so that I can get out?" The congestion, the traffic, the parking, and just the cost.
And the turnover. We don't need the turnover there. She's there thirty-six years, the other ten in my house are there twenty years. I charge low rent. My people don't leave. They stay.
And again, Mr. Rayelli, she's from perfectly high, she has connections to Coward. I mean, for her, this is a for-profit house. Which I understand people like to make profits, but not at the expense of people's safety and neighbors', and the well-being and safety of the neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry. First, let me start off by saying, any board members have questions for the Maslenkos?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Tern?
Since she owned the house, there was the family of five, there was the couple that ran up in the night for medicine. She knows better. There was four tenants downstairs. There was three families upstairs. The one family that had seven people, the five children, and the two adults. There was a, another family just recently moved out. They had two grandsons when they first moved there, and their third son moved in there. So there was five of them with almost five cars, which they never used the driveway, because the garage was always packed with stuff. And the other ten, Jerry, that lived downstairs, used the other garage, so there was very limited space in the driveway or in the garages. There was initially one girl that moved in. She had, I think she was supposed to be by herself, but she wound up bringing her friend, and about fourteen or fifteen different animals that they had in, which I think you asked to leave. There was another girl who, I think, lasted about six weeks in the downstairs apartment. She supposedly got sick, and she just left in the middle of the night.
Yeah, it wasn't six weeks, but downstairs, I had a total of, I had Jen, who had her friend with a lot of pets that I asked to leave. There was a girl that we lived with for about a year, and then there was Jerry, and then my aunt would leave before that.
And I had four.
That was four downstairs. When I rented to Mohammed upstairs, he was a family of four. There was two children and he and his wife, but then, but then, they had triplets.
They only had twins.
Oh, okay, so they had...
Three, and then they had the twins.
Okay, so while they were, you know, so it wasn't, you know...
No, I'm not saying you intentionally rented it to them, but I'm just saying, for the amount of time they spent there, and...
What, they lived there for like...
All right, I want to try and bring this to a conclusion, a discussion back and forth about who lived there, who didn't live there.
Mohammed, he was the first one after Mohammed.
The only point that I was trying to make was that there wasn't a whole lot of turnover here. We've only identified about five different people in eleven years.
He cut them off. Okay, so I had Mohammed upstairs, and then I had a family, there was a couple with the little baby that they love. And then I had another couple.
Yeah, Chairman, this doesn't really matter.
No, I thought I'd already kind of made that clear. The attorney's allowing...
So there were three tenants upstairs, three in eleven years.
Okay.
No further questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else in the public who would like to make comment on the application? Okay, seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Grom made the motion, seconded by Mr. Colletti, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? So carried. The public portion of the hearing is closed. Mr. Tern?
The board is inclined to deny the application. I would like to have time to review the documents that the board engineer and planner were discussing tonight, because we've never seen them.
So would like to carry the hearing?
Carry this.
Is anyone on the board okay with carrying the hearing?
I would say that would make sense and be fair.
Yeah, I think it should be. I personally think it makes sense, of course. All right, so should we, a motion to carry it?
To March, yeah, we have to get our specific date, 7:30 here, no further notice.
Well, it'd be the second Thursday of March, whatever that is.
Why don't you come up with a... I have my...
So it'd be March 12th?
Correct.
And the year, right?
Clear to the public?
I will, I will. All right, so we have a motion to carry this hearing to March 12th at 7:30 PM.
I'll make the motion.
No further notice. Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, we have a second by Mr. Ladati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. For the public, you understand there will be no more notice. If you'd like to come back and hear the remainder of the hearing, you have to be here on March 12th at 7:30.
Okay. Do we have any time issues as far as extensions, Mr. O'Connor? I don't think so. Do we have any?
Good start of the application.
Well, we're still ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good.
Okay. What's left on the agenda?
Nothing, I believe. We're down to comments for the good of the board, and then I've opened a meeting to the public, and then we can adjourn. Okay, hold on, I'm going to, I'm going to open the meeting to the public for comments. All right, just waiting for the two professionals to finish here. Okay, so we're done with this hearing until March 12th. So next on the agenda is comments for the good of the board. Is there anyone who has any comments for the good of the board? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to open or entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Let's open it.
A motion from Mr. Grimaldi, seconded from Mr. Ladati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Is there anyone in the public who has any comments they would like to make? Please step forward.
But it should not be a comment on the case that we just heard, because we're really, then we'd be extending the hearing.
Right, so we'd have to wait until March 12th.
There's some questions, like if you start now on who lived there, or the traffic, then we're going to start with...
I have a question. Scott Plinder and his wife were not able to attend, and they had written letters. I'm not sure if you guys received them?
We did.
Okay, I had these. I just wanted to know if you didn't, I would like to present them to you, or...
We can't, we can't look at them. By law, if they want to be here on March 12th, the board would be allowed to hear them, why? But we can't, no board can take petitions or letters unless the people who wrote them are here, because if the board had questions of people, they're not here to respond to the letter, so, so if they want to be here, they're perfectly welcome.
Can I give him my letters?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, well, the fact, why don't you give it to Ellen? Is your letter, does your letter say the same thing that you just did?
Yes.
Said? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else in the public who has, who would like to say anything on the public record here? Okay, seeing no one, I entertain a motion to close the public portion. Seconded. Motion made by Miss Ladati, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second or you vote?
I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Shelby, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so carried. The meeting is adjourned.
Hey.